I am calling this public. I'm calling this public hearing to order at 6:05 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on June 25, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. So unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Good staff, and welcome back from your wedding celebration in Finland. Could you all identify yourselves?
Thank you, Chair Parker. Elena Idemary from the Environment Department.
Deedee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Vivian De La Paz with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you, and congratulations, Elena. Call the role of commissioners. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Laney?
Amy Laney.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Estes Smajazzi?
Steve Estes Smajazzi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Ann Herbst.
Okay, great. First item on the agenda this evening is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0062040 from Child's Engineering on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed repairs to a deteriorated seawall, including the repointing of joints and filling of voids with concrete fill at 242 Northern Avenue in South Boston on the waterfront. The resource areas are designated port area, land subject to coastal storm flowage and coastal bank. This has been continued from our June 4, 2025 hearing, and the only thing that was outstanding was we were waiting for a letter from DMF to see if they had any issues with the project. And from what I understand, because the project will be all within the existing footprint, they had no comments. Is that correct, Elena?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, I just want to remind members of the public, if you'd like to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. As far as the proponents here this evening, did you have anything to add to that, or can we go to a vote?
I don't believe there's anything to add.
Great, thank you. Elena, any raised hands?
I see no raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, great. And the order of conditions is in good shape?
Apologies. Yes, order of conditions is in good shape, and I do not believe that the commission had included any additional special conditions based on their discussion on June 4.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions.
Still moved?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smajazzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Next item on the agenda, Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0062037 and Boston File Number 2025-012 from 686 Architects on behalf of David Collins for the demolition of an existing building and construction of a multifamily building with accompanying ground-level parking and drainage improvements at 5 Warren Avenue in Hyde Park. Resource areas bordering land subject to flooding, 100-foot buffer to bank, 25-foot riverfront area, and 25-foot waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
William Christopher from 686 Architects.
Okay, anyone else?
Chair, James Christopher, 686 Architects. We're also joined, should be on the call, Paul Terrell, civil engineer, and Steve Ives, environmental scientist.
Welcome.
Okay, the floor is yours.
All right, good evening. We have a slideshow that we... There you go. All right, so these are the consultants and professionals working on the project. Next slide. This is just a summary sheet of the project itself, the building, square footage, unit mix, and unit count. Next slide. This is the existing site plan denoting the, you know, the important factors. The conservation is articulated to us, but this is the, again, the present site. To the left is the Nippon River. To the top of the page is Warren Ave. Our side obviously is in the middle. Next slide. This is the same site plan with the proposed addition, proposed building cited on the plate. The building is going to be totally with enclosed. We're going to be removing all the existing paving on the site. Within the footprint of the building, we're going to be parking nine cars at the street level. The foundation is going to be built watertight so that we minimize our impact. We are totally outside of the 25-foot buffer. And then there's a portion of our building that's within the 25-riverfront buffer. Next slide.
Can I just stop you there for a second? I thought that the building was outside of the riverfront area and within the waterfront area. Did I get that wrong?
No, that's correct. Sorry about that. I think we just misspoke a little bit. It's actually, I'm David Collins, the property owner, by the way. It's actually 25 feet outside of the riverfront buffer, but it's within the waterfront buffer.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The two, the two terms. But the, the, the the drawings in front of you are the water and sewer submissions that articulate the topography and how we're going to be complimenting the topography that's there. Next slide. More details. Next slide. This is the simplified site use plan that illustrates that, you know, we're going to be addressing the Warren Ave in the upper right-hand corner of the site. That'll be the only access point to the site. And then the remainder of the site will be returned back to its natural site, natural state. And then the next slide is the planting plan that shows how we're going to be adding, you know, six trees and 12 bushes along that buffer area. The dash line coming across is the siltation fence that'll be put in during construction. We have, I think, addressed all the major issues that go forward. There are more slides, but they're about the building, so I'm not sure that you want to see that. I thought you'd be more interested in the inside information. But basically, you know, the Nippon River is about eight feet below the top of the bank on the site. There is no bordering vegetated wetlands along the river. The bank of the river is actually very steep, and it drops off pretty severely, as shown on the drawing. There is a fence that runs parallel to the Nippon River, a run eye fence that is going to be removed and not replaced. The building will be serviced by water and sewer. There is a stormwater filtration system being provided in the eastly corner of the building with PVC connection to a trench drain on the north side of the building. Anticipated sewage flow is about 110 gallons per bedroom, times 16 bedrooms, roughly 1,760 gallons. The project is designed to reduce the impervious area. The existing bit of this driveway that falls within the buffer zone will be removed. And the only work proposed within the 25-foot riverfront area is grading and planting, as you can see on that plan, that provides for wildlife habitat function and values between the Nippon River and the building. In a nutshell, that's the project before you. We have conducted a site tour with staff, and, you know, I'm sure they've reported their findings. So we open it up to questions and comments, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so Dave, I just want to let you know ahead of time, this is, this is a very sensitive area. We've had several other projects in similar, similarly situated in areas like this, in Hyde Park and Roselandale. So don't be offended. We're going to be asking a lot of questions about this. But I will say that, you know, it's always good to see someone tackle these sites and put up housing and make improvements to what is there. So I'll just start off with a few general questions, and I know my fellow commissioners will get more specific, depending on their expertise. One thing I wanted to mention was a calculation regarding impervious areas. I think you said there, the NOI said that there's a decrease in impervious area, and I think it's because the driveway is being removed, but there's a building going up. So I'm not sure that that calculation or that statement is correct. So I don't know if you have that calculation for us?
I see wrong that it was a decrease. There will actually be an increase of 1,084 square feet. The site currently is 8,931 square feet. Existing building footprint is 1,626 square feet. Proposed building is 3,622. The existing driveway is 912 feet plus or minus. The area within the 25-foot waterfront area is 2,200. So the net result will end up with an increase between existing and pervious in the new of 1,084.
Okay, thank you.
If I could also help for the one benefit or comment for the commissioners are, this project will eliminate any untreated stormwater runoff to the river. Currently, the exposed asphalt has parking on it, and there is no stormwater collection. It just sheet flows into the river. The project proposes to, you know, stop that type of use. We're going to have a collection system for the building. We're going to infiltrate it in accordance with the Boston Water and Sewers Regulations. So it'll be, it'll be an increase in the, you know, total suspended solids to the river.
Sure.
Decrease.
Decrease, please. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that, and that's why I said at the beginning with my message, Dave, that we know that there'll be improvements, so I'm very happy to see that. Couple other things regarding the NOI, and this would be more towards Steve. The, I see that you're going to be doing some, putting some fill in the riverfront area. So when the riverfront area is being altered, the regs say that we need to see an alternatives analysis. And I'm not sure I saw that in there. I'm thinking something along the lines of what would the stormwater, what would be the stormwater performance, you know, if there was no addition of fill? Like, what is the difference between importing that fill into the riverfront area and it remaining, remaining in its existing condition? Or if more fill would be better? So...
Commissioner, if I could, that's more of an engineering answer, and I'd be happy to answer that for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Again, I'm Paul Terrell with Greater Boston Survey and Engineering. And what we have today is a situation where, as we indicated, there's a larger portion of untreated impervious area that's subject to, you know, hydrocortons and silt and debris because there's no cover on it. If the, if the condition was left in its current state, it would be no better. If it, if the condition that we propose is allowed, there'll be, I would call it a net no change in stormwater runoff, but I would say water quality would be improved. The additional fill that's being provided will have a, you know, it'll be, it will be of a higher quality. It'll attenuate the stormwater runoff, I think, functionally better. It'll serve as a cleanant. And the only reason why we're proposing the fill is to be able to better provide for the proposed planting that is going to be used at that location. The amount of fill is somewhat minimalist, and we could reduce it if it was at all somewhat of a significant issue. But we feel as though it's appropriate condition. It'll create a nice situation where the plants will be able to survive. And I'll also point out, there's no proposed outside use. There's no, there's no patios, there's no public access. The tenants are not, you know, this isn't, the intention of this is to let it come back to nature. It's currently not very well maintained. It's currently in a, I won't speak to it. I'm not an environmentalist, but I think you guys that have visited this site would say it's not, it's not, it's not maintained. And the intention of the final deliverable will be a situation where nature can come back and grow. The stormwater runoff pollutants will be reduced, and everything will be better, I should say, is a net benefit. I will say another thing, you know, the first iterations that David proposed had parking in this area. It was through his analysis and conversations with us that the ultimate design that you have creates the situation where it's all nature in the back. Dave, feel free to correct me if I misspoke.
No, absolutely. And this project has been designed and redesigned, and 686 and Paul obviously got involved as well. When the parking was around the other side, there was a different project team that it just wasn't going to work out from an environmental standpoint, the way that it was originally designed. So it has gone through a very lengthy design process to kind of make sure that that area closest to the river stays as natural or becomes taken back by nature as much as possible.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. Thank you, Paul. Okay, last comment before I turn over to other commissioners. I note in the NOI in several places that it refers to the river. Actually, I have two comments. It refers to the river as a perennial stream. We're going to need to clean that up for the final submission. And then the issue of the bank and the fence that's there now, there's a, issues in that stretch of the river. There's a superfund site not too far from there. I can't tell you exactly what's going on with the sediments near the property. I think Elena has talked to people at EPA. So we have questions, one about any sort of work around the bank itself because of its instability, number one. And then number two, about access to the river, given its current, current issues, which expect to be cleared up, you know, in the not-too-distant future. But right now, I'm not sure if access needs to be restricted. Elena, did you have anything else on that? Because I think you said you would talk to EPA staff about it.
I think, yeah, so I've been kept in the loop on the, again, it's not my exact area of expertise, but based on the summaries that I've been given, I think that the recommendation seems to be that people not be in that part of the river at the moment. And I think that one of the things that we were wondering about is if the fence is taken out, and there are some trees along the riverbank that seem to not be in the best shape and may eventually come down on their own. I think our question is more, how will residents be informed about the state of the river and the fact that they should not be accessing them in, like, in current conditions? And secondly, well, sorry, actually, let me break that into three parts perhaps. So if the fence comes out, how will, yeah, how will people be informed about the conditions of the river and whether or not it's safe for them to access it in the future? Is the expectation that people would be able to access the river? And in the meantime, how will that be maintained? So that, one of the things that we had talked about on the site visit, I think somebody had mentioned the possibility of a low wall to sort of mark as an indicator that people shouldn't be going beyond that. But I'm just wondering if this is something that the project team has thought about further and what they expect the residents' relationship to the river will be.
Again, I could offer for your benefit, having worked on similar projects along the Ponset River in this area and being aware of the superfund sites that exist. And then, Dave, again, I'm going to speak for your benefit. You can kick me and tell me if I'm wrong. I don't think that Dave would be adverse to providing, leaving the fence that's in place that may be in deleterious condition. However, its removal may, may cause a negative effect on some of the trees. I think a shot four-foot fence, new, constructed along the top of the bank, that'll allow the trees to grow in a little, a couple of signs along it, you know? Access should be reconsidered if there's a recommendation you make. Dave, do you have any adverse opinion to that?
That's the fault that I was on the site and we walked in years. That was one of the discussions, was the idea of putting a small barrier a little further in from where the fence line is currently to act as its deterrent. Hopefully, the Nippon River is going to be coming back, and it'll be something that people will be allowed to have access to. But I concur with Paul that what we could do is we could remove the fabric of the existing fence right now and put new fabric up if it's, you know, if it's thought as an idea to keep people away from the river in this area for right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before I go to the commissioners, I want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, on the stormwater, I understand you're going to hold the first inch of water at all. What happens when we have three inches of rain? How is the excess water being disposed either on the land or into the pipes?
Well, first of all, I think we're going to oversize the system because of its unique location. Second of all, it'd have an overflow to the city's drainage system if one exists. Alternatively, we'll just triple-size the infiltration system.
So even if we triple-size it, then when the rainstorm is triple-sized plus one inch, how will the water, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned about running off, again, sheet flow, but it would be probably point flow.
Yeah, no, John, so if, as we have not submitted to you yet for the stormwater design, you're obviously going to get an ultimate approval on that. As is typically the case, we have an overflow to the drain in Warren Ave. I don't remember off the top of my head as if there is one. I will tell you, as an alternative, we can put something in the backyard that has a stilling basin where an overflow, because the elevation of this building is high, we can have an overflow go into the backyard as a stilling basin.
Yeah, well, we'll be taking a look at that anyway, water, so I just, I'm just bringing it up as a real concern because, you know, if we have as a point, we're just going to be creating a gutter, gully if you get any downwash, et cetera.
Obviously, you wouldn't approve that to begin with, so...
Well, I know, so I just, just giving you a heads up, that's all.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So there might be some slight modifications to the grading that's shown in the backyard. We may put in like a stone stilling basin that allows for the overflow of the detention facility. As you saw, there's a very large footprint of this building. And to meet Boston Water and Sewers Regulations only requires about 8% of the building footprint. We have the intention to overflow, have a rather substantive drainage system.
Yep, and I guess the other thing was when we, I heard about the silt fence, but I couldn't really see it again on the screen. Is that going to be beyond where you're going to be putting the trees in? So we're protecting, we put one silt fence in, then we put all, plant all the trees, then remove it later? Or how does that work?
I will defer to Steve on that, since that's an environmental question.
It, I will answer that by saying it depends on the grade. If the grade is, you know, if we look at the grade and say, no, that's too much, we'll put in two silt fences, parallel to each other, one closer to the river and one further away behind the landscaping.
And when will you, since you prepare plans and you've set up grades and potential grades, you should know what's going on before, you know, so we can approve a set of plans that says this is what you'll do.
Before you folks have, before we submit to water and sewer.
Okay.
The current silt fence, fences showed on the plans as in front of the trees, if that needs to change.
I'm just going to, I'm going to offer up, John, that we will take a look at that condition and maybe give you a couple of phases. A construction phase before the plants put in and a construction phase after the planting is done.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to see a silt fence between the river and the last place you're going to be stepping on. So that, you know, and I didn't quite see that on the plans the way I looked at it, but that's, that's it. That's all I had.
Okay, so the sequencing of that, just so I'm clear, when we put together the conditions for this, the sequencing for that is we're going to see two sets of plans before construction? Paul, is that your suggestion?
My, my suggestion is that before we have the, unless we're going to get a vote today, you can make it a condition, first of all, that we have, that is a condition of this approval, that there be an understanding that we have two silt fence lines, a construction silt fence line and a planting silt fence line submitted for your agent's approval. That's one offer.
Yep.
I like that offer, Paul.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, and we would put that into the order of conditions. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Commissioner Laney?
I had a couple of questions on the planting plan, so maybe we can go back to that. It was the last.
Oh, two, yeah, there it is.
In here, so I believe it says just, it says minimum two-inch caliper for these trees. And do you, I guess, anticipate having to bring in heavy machinery into this area for the grading and the planting? That's one question, and I think also going back to John's comment about concern about that, that edge, sort of where the bank begins. And then is that slope, that existing slope down to the water, is that pretty heavily vegetated and considered pretty stable at this point?
This is Steve Ives, and the question was regarding the machinery, and it would be light machinery. You could, you could put that in with light machinery. And is the slope stable now? Yes, it is. It's been there for a long time, and it doesn't have many runoff channels in it as well, at all.
Okay, that's great. And then a comment on the planting, I guess, when you talked about sort of referencing, you know, the natural riverbank condition. I find that planting, this is more of a design comment, but it's fairly formal and layout. So I think something that maybe blends in a little bit more with that existing condition might make sense if that's, if that's the intent with those plantings. That's all I have.
That's, that's fine. We'd be happy to do that. And the plantings were really to increase the structure at eye level so that people would not be encouraged to go down toward the river.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Laney, as far as what we were putting in the conditions, I think we're talking about getting a final planting plan before work starts, approved by staff. Is that okay with you?
That'd be great. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, just to add to Commissioner Laney's questions about the planting plan, I think, you know, the selections you have there are perfectly fine. I think maybe the density might be something that we want to increase if you are trying to limit access. Like, some of these plants won't be very large for quite a while. The other thing, I mean, like, yep, sorry. Go ahead.
In that case, then we can add more shrubbery, certainly.
Yeah, yeah, understory would definitely help there. And the other bit that I was just thinking, I mean, to your point that the bank seems relatively stable, that's great. There might be some other, I mean, the red maple, perfectly good sort of riverside tree, as is but there might be some other ones that you might think of that are available in terms of like river birch, it's a little more fast-growing to really lock in that site.
Agreed.
I guess.
Totally agree.
Yeah, sassafras. There's a couple others that might be, if you want to make sure that bank gets shored up naturally, then you know, those are things you could consider when you, you know, do the staff approval for the planting plan.
Thank you, we shall.
Okay, cool. Yeah, beyond that, again, to Chair Parker's comment, trying to put in housing here and being respectful of the site is a tricky balance. And appreciate you taking another whack at it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Estes Smajazzi?
Most of my concerns have been dealt with. I had the similar concerns about the single silt fence, fair amount of excavation for all that planting and nothing closer to the river. I think we've dealt with that. Then I had a similar concern as I was looking at the site plan and the distance to the river about runoff above that first inch, so I think we've dealt with that as well.
Fantastic, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I have some questions. You're actually proposing four feet of fill, and I'm a little, I guess I'm just not sure why. It looks like most of the plantings wouldn't. You talked about it as being for the plantings, but I think it's, I'm not clear that.
Commissioner, are you referring to the grading plan?
I am referring to the, yeah.
So one of the other ideas associated with the grading shown in a sloped fashion like that in creating a little bit of filler so that we don't create a plateau or a flat level landing area that the tenants would be encouraged to be, be used. One of the net benefits of having that gradually graded slope is for just that purposes. Nobody, nobody can go out there and sit. You can, you can navigate down by walking, however, they won't be However, they won't be encouraged to start using it as a patio. Nobody will be out there, you know, setting up shears and possibly throwing debris into the river. So one of the net reasons is for that. We, we wanted to create a situation that nature was coming back. It was going to continue as a slope. We can slightly, we can certainly slightly decrease it. But I wanted to point out the thought process associated, why we pulled up some of that grading.
Yeah, I'm not sure I am clear whether it's good or a bad idea, although that much bringing in fill at the riverbank that's so steep. I, I am concerned about that, just the amount of activity that's going to be there.
There is, there is a logic associated with a net balance. The situation is there is going to be a foundation that's going to be constructed here. The, uh, material is going to be tested and it's going to be graded. And so it's going to be good material to reuse, reduces trucking, reduces, um, you know, try impacts to the neighborhood with, you know, material being all been being hauled in and out. We're trying to make this a net balanced site as well.
Right. So, um, like the other, I, I, I'm pleased about the pulling back out of the riverfront area in terms of the pavement. I, I am concerned that your filing was not accurate, that you indicated no impacts in the riverfront area when in fact you're proposing four feet of fill and that, uh, the, the figures on, uh, impervious service were, were not accurate. So I would like you to provide a, I, I think you have a improvement in the riverfront area and in the significant encroachment in the, in the waterfront area. And I, I just think those things should be corrected. I understand from your conversation, uh, with Commissioner Sullivan that it's not yet, you don't yet have clarity on, on the stormwater system. So I would want to know how that's going to, what, what you're proposing before we vote on it. Uh, those, those would be my concerns. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, uh, this all, uh, raised a few other issues. Thank you for the discussion. Um, one is, uh, I, I think we'd be looking for a condition regarding the, um, survival of the, um, uh, whatever the plantings are, um, that there'd be something like, and Eleanor, correct me if we already have this as a standard condition, but, uh, if, uh, there is a failure within two years or whatever the appropriate amount of time is, that, uh, that those plantings would be replaced. Um, and as I'm saying this out loud, I think we have a standard condition. Do we or don't we, Eleanor?
Uh, we, yeah, that should be included in the standard conditions. And, um, uh, and a question that I had gotten from the team, which, um, I had not had a chance to respond to, but could respond to here is the question of if, um, ownership of the property changes, how this would work? And, um, the answer to that is that the order of conditions and any, uh, perpetual conditions, once a certificate of compliance is issued, um, they just transfer with the property. So, um, the people who live there next are responsible for that and, um, they would be held to those same conditions.
Sure. Yeah, it travels with the land. And thank you for, uh, bringing that up because that was my last point was, are these going to be condos or apartments?
Are they for homeownership units? So condos.
Okay, okay. So the order of conditions should be referenced in the, um, master deed. So that condo owners going forward and the association going forward, after you're long gone, hopefully have sold all the units. Um, and you drive by and just look at it proudly, they will actually know, um, how to manage the property. Um, and I think, uh, based on something, I think Commissioner Herbst said, uh, we'd want to have a, a special condition in there, um, prohibiting, uh, patios in that riverfront area. Sometimes, uh, 20 years from now or 10 years from now, um, people forget. So, um, Eleanor, any raised hands?
Commissioner, as a point of clarification, if I could, is the suggestion that we're not going to close this hearing, uh, this evening?
Yeah, it sounds like we've got a little bit of, um, uh, homework to do there, um, Commissioner Herbst.
If I could offer, if I could offer, so you, you just made a condition that, uh, you know, there's no patios. And I think the grading supports that decision in logic. And I certainly appreciate the commissioner's concern about the drainage design. As you can tell from the, as you can expect from the applicant, it really didn't behoove him to file with Water and Sewer until he got past you folks first. So I would ask whether or not an approved Boston Water and Sewer design is adequate for a submission to address the commissioner's concerns relative to drainage.
Yeah, I think, I think she had other concerns. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, you can speak for yourself.
Uh, yes. And I think had you, had the filing itself been accurate in the beginning, that, that might be sufficient. But I think it, it's, I want to see applications that come through that are accurate and this was not. And it's a, it's kind of, it's not insignificant to, in terms of what DEP looks at to say there's no riverfront impact, therefore no alternatives analysis. Um, this, this may not be a problematic choice you're making, but it's important that.
Understood, Commissioner. So are you just, may I ask for clarification? You're just asking for us to clean up the filing and probably provide you a little bit more of a better drainage design?
And work, and work, and I, fortunately for us, Boston Water and Sewer will have full, uh, say in the end, but we should know what is, what you're proposing and, and that, that that's, that that's going to work for us. Um, I also think if you, I'll, I'll just say in addition, is, as long as you're, you've got a little extra time, I'd be interested to see, uh, what you propose on the landscaping in terms of shrubbery and perhaps other tree choices. I think that'd be helpful to see.
If I could, the only thing I have to say is, is the height, the timeline, that request of having a water and sewer approval before you approve.
No, no.
Oh, no, you're not asking that.
No, no. I, I just want to know what it is, um, which it sounded like we didn't know exactly yet. So.
Understood. Yes, thank you.
So Paul, uh, yeah, what we want to see is the, um, uh, NOI cleaned up a bit with the information that, uh, Commissioner Herbst just talked about. Um, I would like to see your very articulate alternatives analysis and writing in the filing. Um, and Commissioner Laney, you have your hand up, please.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question, I think on the vegetation because, um, you know, looking back at how it relates to the grading, which I think would be helpful to see in that planting plan. Um, is there any stabilization being added along that slope? Um, and anything that can continue into the, the top of the bank, um, to help with that slope? Does that make sense? Like what is the, what is the ground plane of that new planting area?
Steve, and that's a question for Steve, a buddy.
Yeah, you, I'm sorry, um, I'm a little confused with your question. Are you talking about the elevation of the grade at that point and how the plant's going to sit and present itself or?
No, it's really more about what kind of measures are taken to stabilize that slope. So the newly graded area, um, that you're planting with trees and shrubs, is there? And I think, um, Commissioner Wilson had touched on this, is there something there that's, are, you know, are you planting? Are you putting down a seed mix or?
Yeah, right now I understand for sure. A, a jute matting seed mix would be my recommendation. Uh, you lay that down, you, you, it, it, nature takes effect and the jute matting stabilizes the slope during its development.
With, with ground staples with the jute matting.
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you. Eleanor?
Uh, yeah, and I also just, uh, quickly wanted to note, um, for the project team, many of the issues that, uh, Commissioner Herbst had brought up are mentioned in an email from our staff from June 11th. So those also cover a more itemized list of, um, the inaccuracies in WPA Form 3, the Boston NOI form, the project narrative, which also includes the request to delete the word perennial, um, from the description of the Naponton River. And, um, yeah, so those are, those are in a, a June 11th email, which, um, might be helpful to reference.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you, everyone. And, um, uh, as I said, Dave, um, these are, these are tricky projects. We have a lot of questions. Um, if you had gotten out of here tonight with an order of conditions, that certainly would have been a record, uh, for a property like this. Uh, so.
We're in this one, I'm in this one for the long haul at this point, so, um.
I'm sure you are. Okay, okay, great. So with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DEP file number 0062043 and Boston file number 2025-051 from VHB on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, uh, Division of Waterways for the proposed construction of a floating hinged dock with associated ramp and asphalt walkways at 1175 Soldiers Field Road in Alston. Uh, resource areas inland bank, land under waterways? Yeah, land underwaterway. There's a river there. Okay. Uh, bordering land subject to flooding, 25 foot riverfront area, 25 foot waterfront area, 100 foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Crewe with VHB. Um, I'm joined today by Greg Robbins from DCR as well as, uh, Charlie Roberts from Child's Engineering and, um, some folks from the, from Casali Group as well, Jocelyn and, and Tom.
Great, thank you. Laura is yours.
Thank you. Okay, next slide, please. Just want to provide a little bit of background for this project. In 2024, DEP issued a chapter 91 license, um, actually two licenses for some properties further down the river, downstream, the Weld and Newell boathouses. Um, according to the chapter 91 license as mitigation for impacts from those projects, Harvard would be required to design, permit and construct a public pile held floating dock on the project site. Once the project is complete, um, the dock will be owned and maintained by DCR and that is why they are the applicant. And also a dock at this location was identified in the 2022 Herter Park Master Plan. Uh, the purpose of this project is to promote access to rowing facilities, first class to rowing programs and, uh, as well as public access. Next slide, please. So this project identifies the limit of work and it is this very strange shape because it includes the construction access pathway. Um, so based on this, within a limit of work, uh, just over a half acre of the project site is land and a half acre is water sheet. Um, these are again, the wetland resource areas that, um, Commissioner Parker or Chair Parker identified. Next slide, please. Uh, so the Charles River is a perennial river, dare I say. Um, the bank is armored with a granite curb and there are stones and gravel as well. It has a very shallow slope. The bank vegetation is sparse. It includes speckled alder, honey locust, goldenrod and white mulberry. Um, VHB did a wetlands delineation here of the bank. Upland areas are generally characterized by maintained lawn as well as a paved shared use path and wooden benches. Um, there are several mature trees present within the maintained lawn area, including red oak and eastern white oak. And many of them have buttressed rooting, which, uh, DCR is very aware of and, um, is taking great pains to protect. Next slide, please. The project itself is limited to a 210 foot by 14 foot floating hinge dock with a ramp and an asphalt walkway connecting to the existing Dr. Paul Dudley White Bike Path, uh, which is identified in purple here. The dock itself will be made out of EPE wood decking and it'll be framed with marine grade pressure treated lumber. So there will be six 12 inch, uh, guide piles to anchor the dock. Those are identified in red. Those are in water piles. There will also be four 12 inch timber piles along the bank to support the concrete abutment and that is identified in yellow. And then connecting the two will be a 40 foot aluminum framed ramp with timber decking. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a section of the proposed conditions. Uh, it shows that the aluminum framed ramp has the ability to go up and down. Obviously, uh, if, as the river changes elevation, the river is controlled by the Charles River Dam by DCR. Uh, so there is not too much variation in the water level here. And then the next slide shows a detail of the abutment. Um, so you can see that there's a new concrete abutment that's pile supported. Um, and then you can see the asphalt walkway with a crushstone base to the right and then the, the hinged dock to the left. Next slide, please. So the project does have impacts to bordering land subject to flooding and it provides compensatory flood storage. Um, it won't significantly alter the storage capacity of the Charles River Basin. It will result in, uh, 40 square feet of fill, which is one and a half cubic yards and 60 square feet of cut, which is 2.2 cubic yards. Next slide, please. So the impacts will primarily come from the construction period. There's work on both the land and the water side. On the land side, there will be a, a lay down area set up in the existing parking lot. And that's where all the equipment and the materials will be staged. Then there will be a crushed stone construction entrance set up just past the existing pathway. Um, you can see it on the, toward the bottom right of the slide. Then a 14 foot wide construction path that's comprised of tree root protection mats will be set up. On this particular location, it's very windy, but it was set up to avoid impacts to trees to the maximum extent practicable. Um, the path will be lined on both sides with tree protection fencing and construction fencing will define the limit of work. And then closer to the dock, you'll see that there, there will be a temporary bike path that will be comprised of geotextile fabric and compacted stone dust so that folks can bypass the work area. And the fence will be open there, um, except for when there's equipment traversing the path. So the work sequence will start, uh, by clearing the woody vegetation within 20 feet on either side of the proposed ramp center line. Then the bank will be excavated, uh, just in the location where the, uh, concrete abutment is going to be. Um, the landslide piles will be, uh, um, they'll be placed and then the concrete abutment itself will be installed. And then next, that adjacent area will be graded so that it can meet the existing pathway and the asphalt walkway will be constructed. On the water side, a floating silt fence with turbidity curtain and absorbent boom will be placed at the limit of work, which is roughly in this rectangle here. The new floating dock and the guide piles will get to the site, um, on a spud barge. And then there will be a mantis crane and pile driving equipment on that barge as well. So once the piles, uh, are in place and the float is in place, then, um, the ramp will be installed between the dock and the abutment. And then after all of these main components have been put into place, then there'll be some minor finishing work. Next slide, please. So I do want to point out that no trees will be removed as part of the project. The alders that are on the, uh, bank are actually shrubs, uh, not trees. All of the existing trees within, um, the project site and nearby will be protected using tree protection fencing um, and tree armoring as well. And then again, the tree root protection mats will be used wherever their roots are visible at the ground surface or if it's near tree trunks. Um, Harvard is hiring a licensed arborist, uh, from Bartlett to be onsite during construction to ensure that the tree roots and the trunks and the branches are all protected. And then any protection, uh, that's, or pruning that is recommended in the field by the arborist, that will be implemented, uh, at the time. Next slide, please. So these are the, um, the total temporary and permanent impacts to each of the resource areas. And I do just want to point out that, uh, uh, there is riverfront area here, but an alternatives analysis was not conducted because this project requires a chapter 91 license. So it's exempt from those requirements. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you. Um, just two things for me real quick. One is, uh, the mantis crane. Um, where's that going to be staged?
Um, that's on the barge, but Charlie, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, it's a little bit, uh, from a, from a waterborne, that kind of be five months of similar to how we do it at the northern wild. Um, uh.
Charlie, I don't know. I think maybe you're talking, um, we've got a lot of feedback. Really can't hear you. It's a lot of static. I don't know if you, um, too close to the microphone or?
How is that? Is that better?
No, it's about the same. Yeah. I mean, if I can translate, were you saying that the crane is going to be on the barge with, um, spill protection measures? Good, that's fine. Okay, we're good. Okay, um. Good, that's fine. Okay, we're good. Okay, um. Okay, what was the other issue? One thing here. Uh, okay, so we've got that. And that was interesting about the Chapter 91 exemption for the um, for the alternatives analysis. Thank you for that. Um, I'll just go to Eleanor. The other thought went out of my mind here.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the only other point that we had on this is that when we are onsite, it looked like there was um, an area of Japanese knotweed that was growing right where um, the deck would be built. And uh, our recommendation was going to be that this could perhaps be treated before work begins um, in case it starts to grow up through the concrete or the asphalt and potentially causes structural issues to that, but I didn't know if that was something that the team had already considered.
Um, yeah, so I actually did include one bonus slide. This project site is subject to the Charles River Vegetation Management Plan, um, that is under DEP File 0061871. And it does identify uh, methods of management for Japanese knotweed. Um, it's identified as being cut or mowed in early June or after the plant has bloomed out. Um, and then it provides two different uh, manual method and a chemical method of management. Um, but I believe that is, that will be done by DCR separately from the project. Um, Greg, if you're interested in opining on that, please, please go ahead.
Uh, I, I can't offer an opinion because that is a different group, uh, but that is something that I know that our Parks Team and, and our Landscape Teams have talked to me at length about. Um, I, I'd have to check in with the Vegetation Management Team um, to see what their specific plans would be for the site. But what we do is incorporate all of the appropriate individuals within DCR and make sure that we do whatever we need to do in the, in the way that DCR has set forth.
That's helpful. Um, and I guess, yeah, so if, if it would be possible, um, then maybe we could have a priority construction item um, that just identifies a timeline for that and just understanding whether um, under the Charles River Vegetation Management Plan, uh, this area would be addressed before construction commences.
Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to meet yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, there was a small little paved area leading to the dock, um, coming from the path. And just looking at the, the lines you had on it, how do you treat that drainage without it having all scour right where the connection is in the footing and all that? Just runs off to the side?
Yes, it, it is not designed with any specific um, stormwater management, much like all of the other um, asphalt walkways within DCR's park.
Right, but it's coming-
The same, the same thing.
Yeah, and just that it had a slope-
Right against the abutment.
Yeah, where it has a slope and then hit the abutment, so any of that water's gonna go off to either side and it will, will it erode anything? That's all. Cause little, you know, water quality issues here.
Sure, yeah. Unfortunately, um, Brian Vaschan is not on the call today, um, and he's the designer of the grading. Yeah. I don't know if, well, I was gonna ask Charlie if he's able to speak to that at all, but-
Is that any better?
Yeah, that is-
It's better.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, no, I, I think with the, with the design from that, like it, right now it's kind of designed to, it's not a straight kind of shot from the path down. Um, so it rides the contours a little better to try and minimize the amount of fill um, you know, from that, but I think certainly in the final, you know, we can take that into account. Obviously, our main goal here was to minimize the amount of uh, the amount of uh, um, like fill we have to do in this area, um, from that.
Right, but even if you just disturb the edges a bit and put it into a cracked stone one foot wide, it would keep it from eroding salts.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, yeah, I know, I just couldn't tell what you were doing.
Yeah, yeah. No, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, you know, it, it should also be able to go over the top of the the abutment, um, from that with it being, you know, flush like that.
Yep.
But I think, um, yeah, we can also crown it and run it to the sides, but we'll, we'll take a look and I'll speak to, to Brian as well. We'll come up with a suitable solution, but thank you for that.
That's not a problem. The, the other question is, is this thing taken in during the winter? Because it's rather shallow water there, and does it freeze? And what do you do with that?
No, it is not seasonal. Um, but the, the dock is forty feet out from the shoreline. So I think, what are the depths there, Charlie? Like five feet?
Four, yeah, four to five feet. But ice floes on the top. You know, when you get the ice flow and any kind of movement with the water, is there any kind of velocities there at all? During storms of, if you had a nice six inches of ice form out to the dock, and the dock's now frozen to those pilings. Is there any issue at all? Or is that, you don't think there'll be an issue?
A lot of it, a lot of it depends on, on the, the, the season from that and the management. Um, you know, of that, sometimes we use bubblers for not installing those, in this case, because there's no power at the site. Um, you know, from that, um, we are looking at like a slightly hardened upstream um, from that. Um, but no, it's a, that's, that's certainly noted in one of the issues from it. Obviously, this was a bit more of a usual winter than maybe the last two winters, um, prior.
As part of our design review, DCR did require the ability to remove the floats if necessary, although we don't anticipate seasonal removal. That, that could be, that could be something that we, that we look into if, if a need arises.
Yep, no, no problem. I'm just curious how, how you do it, that's all. All right, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Um, just curious for the, the bike path, um, detour, do you, how, how often do you anticipate that being closed to move um, equipment across the path?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, this is Tom Murray. I think that, that the proven way to do it is to do, doing a work hours. Um, we, we use a bypass, and when we leave the site, we open up that, that path back up. This is my thought.
So it, but, and people will be able to still bike through there while work is going on, is that right?
Yes, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if there's a crane moving from the land to the river, no, but there'll be a brief period of time, so.
Infrequent. Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, my question was about sort of the head of the Charles. I saw that you've had a reference in the NOI about this removing the need for one of the temporary docks associated with the event. And I was just curious, in terms of like vegetation management, we've seen some plans along the way from both DCR and that organization, um, how this might change, not change, improve um, the sort of uh, area around the access points and the finish line there.
Um, Greg, I don't know if you want to take that, but I, I guess the point that we are trying to make is that when those temporary docks are placed, there's a lot more trampling um, near the shoreline because there's not an identified pathway. And so this will eliminate at least one of those instances, um, related to the head of the Charles, but as far as other locations, I don't know if, uh, Greg, if, if you're able to speak to that.
No, I, unfortunately, I can't. I do know that DCR is in active discussions with a number of parties regarding uh, management plan for our head of the Charles, but I, I'm not familiar with them enough to speak here.
Okay, so, I mean, it sounds like on the whole, the, having a permanent facility here would improve the temporary, just the impacts of a temporary facility. Um, but not necessarily beyond the, there, there's, we wouldn't expect any other change in adjacent vegetation and such because of the event beyond, that's it. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Estes Smaschiazi?
You, you're muted.
I was hoping he hadn't quit already.
I'm sorry.
There you are.
I, I had background noise earlier. Um, I've, I, I had no specific comments other than to say I'm glad to see this project is finally um, coming to fruition, uh, getting a clearer and better managed public access to the river at this location is excellent. Um, it's a good condition that D, DC, that DEP put on the Harvard projects.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. And Stephanie, I remembered my comment. Um, uh, you mentioned a Harvard, um, uh, arborist was going to be there to monitor the uh-
Not a Harvard arborist, but Harvard who is funding this-
Bartlett.
Is hiring Bartlett.
Okay, do you mind if we, uh, put that in the order of conditions?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's described in the, in the NOI, so feel free.
Yep, okay. Fantastic. Um, Eleanor, anybody from the public raise their hand?
Apologies, I do not see any hands raised and nothing in the inbox either.
Inbox, okay, fantastic. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with the special condition that uh, an arborist will be on-site, uh, to guarantee the um, uh, health of the existing trees.
So moved?
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smaschiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries six-nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Uh, next item on the agenda, Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 006, 2046 and Boston File Number 2025-018 from Epsilon Associates Inc. on behalf of Channelside Acquisitions LLC for the proposed redevelopment project, including the construction of three mixed-use buildings, a subsurface garage, and public open space and harbor walk improvements along the Four Point Channel at 244 to 284 East Street in South Boston. Um, the resource areas are twenty-five-foot waterfront area, coastal bank, one-hundred-foot buffer to coastal bank, and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, um, Alyssa Jacobs with Epsilon Associates, um, and here with a number of other members of the project team.
Great. The floor is yours.
Okay, great. Um, you did send in a slide deck. That is-
And there it is.
Perfect. It would be really helpful if I could, sorry. Um, good evening. Um, so during the presentation, um, all the rest of the project team will introduce themselves for this channel-side project. Uh, the location of this project is between Binford and Neco Streets along the Four Point Channel. Um, this slide depicts in yellow the land that, um, our client controls. Um, next slide, please. Um, however, the limit of work actually extends beyond, um, this property boundary, um, to the purple dashed line. Um, as noted, and this was described in the NOI, um, so the, it includes work on these abutting parcels. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, the site is almost entirely impervious area. Um, that notch in the shoreline, um, along the, it is the, uh, Boston Water and Sewer Outfall Location. Um, this site contains a portion of existing harbor walk. Uh, the gray portion on the left-hand side of the screen is actually owned by, uh, the property owner next door and is not part of the limits of this project. And this project will be doing work up to the, uh, pump house owned by Gillette on the right-hand side of the floor. Next slide, please. Um, these are just some site photos depicting existing site conditions of the parking lot. Um, the photo on the top right, um, depicts the portion of uh, the existing harbor walk between the pump house and the outfall location that is part of-
I've been debating whether or not I should share this, but you know what?
I'm sorry, is that someone from your team or?
Oh, that was me.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Um, next slide, please. Um, so the resource area is present as, um, noted by Mr. Parker at the beginning. Um, the entire site is located within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, we have coastal bank along the edge of the, uh, harbor walk and Port Point Channel, as well as, um, the associated waterfront area and one-hundred-foot buffer zone. Next slide, please. Um, the site comprises approximately a little over six acres of impervious area that is at risk for coastal flooding. Next slide, please. This slide depicts, um, the proposed project vision, which includes the three buildings depicted here as, uh, G4, G5, and G, G6, and two major open space components, the Four Point Channel Park and the Neco Street Park. Um, I should point out that all public, these parks are all publicly accessible, and the surface of the parks will be conveyed to the city, um, so they will own them post-construction completion. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Hodney from Niche Engineering to discuss, uh, the stormwater for the site.
Thanks, Alyssa. Chris Hodney with Niche Engineering, with the civil engineer on the project. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. So, as Alyssa mentioned, the existing site is about a six-and-a-half-acre parking lot, um, which, and we're going to add approximately, uh, well, to our site and to the, uh, Neco Street right away, about one-point-two acres, uh, of pervious space. So we'll be reducing the impervious area by about one-point-two acres. Um, that in concert with the, uh, four subsurface infiltration systems which are shown on the plan here, are our stormwater management strategy for the site. And you can see those systems in dark gray boxes, um, kind of ringing around the edge of the site. Uh, you can see the other major feature or subsurface feature of the site, which is the I-90 tunnel, which is running diagonally from top-left to the bottom-right. So that creates a, you know, a large, uh, constraint on what we can do below grade here, but we're essentially maxing out the areas below grade where we don't have any other utilities, um, to do stormwater management on the site. And in that, the standard BWSC, um, one-point-two-five-inch storage requirement storm, that, that one-point-two-five-inch storm, that's gonna result, result in a ninety-three percent reduction, uh, in stormwater volume that's leaving the site. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. So just kind of taking a step back here, going to the existing condition, we've got, uh, that six-and-a-half acres, almost entirely impervious, uh, which is gonna run off directly well, through a stormwater management system, but otherwise into the BWSC outfall, which is located at the top of the plan. Next slide. And then, this is a plan showing that, plan view of that rendering, uh, that we've shown a couple slides ago, um, showing the two new parks on the right side, the Four Point Channel Park, the Neco Street Park, uh, as well as the new park, um, on the left side of the plan, which is where the current Binford Street rightaway is. Um, so that's where we get our increase, or increase in the pervious spaces, the green spaces on the site. Um, so that, like I said, combined with our subsurface systems, that's reducing the volume water that, and, and the rate for that matter, uh, of stormwater as it's exiting the site. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rob Adams with Halverson. He's gonna walk through the site design.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Uh, Rob Adams, uh, Principal Landscape Architect at Halverson. Uh, there's a lot to take in here, so I'm gonna be very high-level. This project, uh, is accomplishing a lot of good, primarily around climate change and mitigation of climate change, uh, specifically sea level rise, as well as heat island effect. I think everyone has talked about the plan, uh, but important to note, the harbor walk runs continuously along the channel, uh, and then the two major parks that we've talked about, and then the improvements to Binford rightaway. Next slide, please. This is not a plan that was, uh, built in a vacuum. The city of Boston did an amazing job, uh, with um, the community in developing a program for these open spaces based on the Hundred Acres PDA that has existed for a couple of decades now. So right before us taking on the project, uh, a series of community workshops conducted by the city and Sasaki Associates essentially developed the recipe or ingredients list, if you will, for the program of these open spaces and looking at the entire Hundred Acres, our site, uh, the two uh, that are closer to the water. Next, please. This helped us develop a series of program elements, interactive fountain, amphitheater, big civic lawn, area for food trucks, uh, and, and attention to, uh, landscape and, uh, plantings, uh, were the primary objectives for these two- uh, uh, and attention to uh, landscape and uh, plantings uh, were the primary objectives for these two sites. Next please. Keeping in the not in a vacuum, uh, this is also one of the key locations uh, identified in the Climate Ready South Boston Resiliency Plan that we were fortunate enough to work on. Uh, you can see our site in the green. It is one of the primary pathways for early flooding into uh, the Fort Point area um, as early as twenty thirty, uh, twenty forty. Next please. And so again, as we identified the Fort Point Channel being a key area, this step one, uh, this is a a material taken straightly from the Climate Ready South Boston document, identified this location as the primary uh, phase one uh, focus. Next please. So what we've done and had the luxury of a very large site to do this is rather than creating a simple berm along the water's edge, we have more or less in a in a manner to uh, meet the design flood elevations required by the city of Boston. We have essentially sloped the site around a one point eight, uh, one point five percent slope up from A Street up to a high ridge line just on the backside of the harbor walk. So the pink represents the amount of fill, the more intensity of the pink, the more fill we're providing. The entire site is around elevation fifteen B C B. The designed flood elevation is twenty point five, so that's about a five-and-a-half, six-foot elevation change that needs to occur. And so again, we're fortunate enough to slope up the land up to that ridge line, connect that ridge line into our neighbors to the north at fifteen Neco. Make accommodations for future connections to the south along the Gillette property and then quickly cascade back down to the harbor walk. And on the next slide, please. You get a sense of uh, the city-designed berm that's part of the FEMA grant versus our solution, which is this terrorist amphitheater. And again, this idea of raising the finish grade up about five-and-a-half feet and then slowly tapering it back towards A Street. Um, it is important to note that the city of Boston is proceeding with the FEMA kind of grant um, designed berm that would run continuously from our adjacent property owners, fifteen Neco, all the way uh, to the end of the Fort Point Channel. We're working closely with the city. Should the city's uh, berm be built first as part of that grant? We would work closely with them and maintain the berm through our construction. Hopefully, we'll be at a point where we can build our project first, get it essentially certified as a, as a solution to replace the city uh, city-designed berm so that that project, the city's scope would essentially start south of our project. Next please. And then this is just a quick view of uh, the character of the harbor walk, maintaining an eighteen-foot-wide harbor walk, maintaining the buffer that uh, planted buffer that exists to the seawall, making some minor modifications with the um, jelly jar lights that you that are down there now, respacing them, and then providing on the left side of this image kind of this terrorist amphitheater, which would be again, open to the public, working with the city and the mayor's offices, arts and culture to, to run this as a public venue for performing arts. So it's this great solution of both and, both a resilient uh, sea-level-rise solution, but also a, a great public amenity for the community in the Fort Point Channel. Next please. Heat island effect, quickly, I said there's a lot. So um, planting over a hundred and fifty, I think a hundred and eighty uh, trees, both in shade, uh, large shade trees and understory trees, really focusing on a robust shade tree program to help define and shade the public uh, walkways, to make the linkages within the city uh, safer, uh, cooler, uh, and more attractive and more pedestrian-friendly. Next please. I think these are just, might be the last slide. Really, as started off, this is about the open space providing uh, necessary uh, and equitable open space for the community with the real focus on plant material and providing a place of respite within the Fort Point Channel. Next please, I mean, hopefully is it. Thank you.
Oh, we're done. Okay, thank you. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, regarding the berm. So I assume you wouldn't build uh, your berm, assuming you get there first. You wouldn't be building the berm unless it was certified as a solution prior to your construction, right?
Yeah, Charles Engineering is on the project, uh, working closely with Charlie to develop a solution, uh, a certifiable and engineer, a stamped engineer solution that'll be accepted uh, by City Boston, obviously, and within the FEMA process. I don't know if Charlie wants to elaborate, but yes, the idea would be we, our solution would be replacing the city berm.
Okay, okay. And you'd have certainty beforehand that it was actually the appropriate.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, other question, uh, and actually I'm getting out of my um, area of expertise here. I saw uh, Ginkgo. Um, and I remember probably three or four years ago, and Commissioner Wilson uh, probably has a better memory of this. Um, uh, someone was proposing a Ginkgo tree uh, in the um, seaport and we had we have a lot of discussion about it. Um, and my recollection might be that it was um, another zone. It uh, it's sort of that creeping zone issue where um, it has good survivability uh, in this climate now because of um, higher temperatures. My, anywhere near correct on that? Sounds like, okay.
I don't know. Uh, we have successfully planted Ginkgos in and around Boston. Uh, we it's, it was a request from the community to have diversity of trees. There is an affection for yellow, uh, fall foliage. And so all trees have their location. The site is large enough. We're not using Ginkgos as a broadcast kind of tree solution. It's very selective in its location.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Um, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Uh, thank you. The only uh, question I had was, or rather, potential recommendation is that um, if the commission wanted to, they could include a prior to construction um, condition requiring some sort of documentation of the agreement between the proponent and the city. Um, just so that we have the uh, documentation for the relationship between them and the city and the berm uh, in the project file. But that was the only note that I had about this project.
Okay, just so I understand, so this would be, um, if they have reached a M O A with the city regarding uh, construction of the berm before they start construction, um, that's what you're looking for is the M O A, um, but if they don't, um, we wouldn't be requiring that um, before construction, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
Perhaps once it's available.
Got it, got it. Okay, I just want to remind members of the public, uh, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, how long does it take you to build this whole campus, all the buildings and all the stuff?
Andrew? Wong, you wanna?
So. Referring to Pat, the team. Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so it it'll, it'll be a phased project. Um, so depending on what, those timelines can vary depending on what uh, phase of the project moves forward first, and that's obviously market-dependent. Um, so reluctant to provide a, a specific uh, timeline on total construction duration. Um, but um, that could range anywhere from uh, you know, five to seven to eight years or so, but again, phased project and very much dependent on, on the timing of that.
Yeah, all right. And so I was just curious about the fill. Um, you know, this, your, your first building's gonna be the one down on A Street? Is that correct? Right beside A Street?
No, a- again, um, it's, it'll be dependent, it, so the project's broken up into the west and east phase with um, kind of that, the bifurcated by, you can think of the, the Neco Street extension. Um, and so that, that uh, east phase or east, it'll depend on you know, whether it be G six moves forward first or G five uh, or G four moves forward first, and both those buildings would move forward together. But it's, they're not committing to, to which phase that project will move, or of the project will move forward. First, it's, it's, again, it's marked very much market-dependent.
Yeah, now I was just curious, as your infiltration inch and a quarter, you're gonna be holding. You've got a lot of those bases up around the G five and I guess G six buildings uh, with the, you know, with the additional fill. Uh, if you build the other buildings first, how are we gonna handle all that?
Yeah, so John, this is Chris Hany with Niche. So we submitted separate packages to you, one for each building, so each site. So we have a package for G four and G five, which are essentially uh, gonna be, would likely be constructed together. We also have a separate set for G six, um, a separate set for Neco Street and a separate set for the parks. So whatever piece gets constructed has its associated infiltration, which will manage itself. Um, so it'll get built in pieces as it goes. So if the, if the berm gets built with G four and G five, then those systems will be constructed as part of that, and that, that manages those areas only.
Yep, and the, any of the infiltration that has overflow greater than one and a quarter inch, where does that go?
That's gonna go to the storm drain, your, your storm drain, which is on the site, the one that we relocated uh, in twenty twenty-one.
Right. So the, I'm just, I'm concerned about the tide gate issue. Um, you, you have them overflowed. So does the tide gate downstream from all, all your proposed?
Yes, yeah, we've got the, so we installed the new tide gates, uh, one on the eighteen-inch and then one on the, the sixty-six-inch uh, which is the two tide gates, plus there's the third tide gate which already exists. Um, so any connections that we make to those will be upstream of that, so that the whole site and our systems will be protected uh, in the event of a, either storm surge or high, or extremely high tide.
Right, and there is no further relocation of that seventy-two-inch storm drain, our C S O actually. Um, anticipated beyond which, the, the one that's down on A Street.
No, it's a, it's an existing condition to us now, so we're, we're working around it.
Yep. All right, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linay?
In the um, transferring of those parks, or those park properties to the city, um, what is the proposed agreement for maintenance on those?
Um, I can fill in helicopter level and related deal may fill in otherwise. The Hundred Acres P D A has uh, we'll call it a condo association of all the landowners, and based on their uh, area, they contribute towards uh, an ongoing uh, maintenance fund for the open space for the public realm. So for example, A Street Park, which is currently built uh, along A Street, very similar condition in which it was designed and built by a, uh, Commonal Ventures, by the Channel Center Project. Um, and is now uh, maintained by the Hundred Acres Association, but managed, managed um, by the City of Boston Parks and Rec. This would be a similar situation.
Okay, thank you. Um, one other question, just curious, any concerns about the shadows cast, um, the vegetation on the north sides of the building?
Um, you know, K, uh, K P F, the architects have done a good job. There's some really extensive shadow studies done and K P F has done a really good job of filling and stepping back at critical locations to provide as mu- maximum sun uh, into the space. It's also a relatively pretty wide open space, both in its east-west direction and frankly, north-south. And so there'll be quite a bit of ambient light associated. And so clearly, we'll choose plant species that are more adaptable to some shade conditions, but none of this feels overly uh, canyon uh, like compared to some streetscapes or other public corridors within the city of Boston or even larger cities. So while yes, it's a point of consideration, we're not uh, concerned about the viability of plant material.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, uh, Chair Parker, you have a very good memory. Both the random Ginkgos on a very sunny southwest exposure or whatever, so, um, but yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, so, um, yeah, no, I took a quick look at the planting plan. I mean, it's very extensive. It's not very often that we're looking at basically an entire city park in front of us, so that's exciting to see. Um, I guess just to follow up sort of on, um, Commissioner Sullivan's comments in terms of the phasing, and you know, obviously it's complicated. Lots of things depend on what the city does, what the market does. Um, I guess the, the stuff that's in front of us in terms of the public space is, is the park all one unit? And, or is it sort of separable in terms of like, you know, maintaining the harbor walk, putting in flood protection? But you know, the rest is to come behind a fence, or is it sort of depends on the buildings going in versus uh, you know, in order to generate the revenue for the park, that sort of thing.
There, I'll begin to talk from a very helicopter level and maybe uh, Alyssa or related deal can fill in. There's some very strict requirements as part of the chapter ninety-one license around that. And so when certain buildings get delivered, uh, the open space therefore needs to be delivered as well. And then um, discussion around maintaining the flood resilient barrier. And I think there's a date associated with you know, twenty thirty or twenty fifty, I forget what it was, that um, we would provide some sort of alternative, the project would provide some sort of alternative barriers. Fortunately, that alternative barrier is Neco Street. We're providing, you know, the new extension of Neco Street at a higher elevation. And majoritively, Neco Street meets that criteria for a, a district-wide uh, flood protection should the eastern part, the A Street side of the development get built first. Um, obviously, if the western side gets built first, the berm will be a part of that solution as well, but they're linked to uh, the development of the buildings. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Related deal, I just wanna add into that. So I think, you know, we talked about phasing this, but the intent is that entire project goes at the same time. Right, but because of the flexibility with market conditions and COVID and, and just try to recover from that economic collapse. Um, we're trying to have some flexibility, but the intent is to build all uh, three buildings and all two parks at the same time. As Rob said, the licenses are structured such that, for example, the Neco Street Park would be built um, along with the G six building as well as the um, western side, the Fort Point Channel Park would be built with the G four and G five building and the garage below grade.
Okay, yeah, no, that, that's super helpful and sort of, I think maybe what Chair Parker was kind of referencing is a little bit of our experience with fan peer, which I realize is a different market, different developer, different site and everything like that. But you know, sort of, this seems to be a very synthetic vision, whereas that was a very piecemeal vision. Um, so I think that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that sort of like, the synthetic vision is what we hopefully see eventually. Um, the other bit, and I was trying to find it in just the big PDF of my computers being a pain. Uh, in terms of maintenance, sort of how does that responsibility go forward? Um, like, sort of, there's obviously the warranties that come with the plantings or whatnot, but um, who's in charge of that and how, how does that work over the long term? Cause we've seen some stuff in the seaport to, um, Chair Parker's comment with the Ginkgos, uh, sort of, you know, not necessarily stick the way that they should in other parts of the city. Um, and you know, sort of takes a little longer to figure out um, the vision.
I think part of that was answered, Amy, uh, Commissioner Amy asked about uh, the operations, the maintenance. Most of the maintenance for the open space associated with the two big parks and the waterfront along the harbor walk will be maintained by the Hundred Acres P D A Association.
This is, yes, this is now mapping over to what I just heard. Yes, sorry.
Yes, and then, yes, so that's how that it will be maintained um, in for, uh, for those areas, those public.
All right, sorry about that. Um, but yeah, no, beyond that, thank you, and uh, I really appreciate you uh, channeling this very long planning process into a um, design vision. It's impressive to see, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I heard what you uh, did there, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, good pun. Commissioner Estes Margiazi?
I, I, my questions have just been answered. I was concerned about the sequencing on park development. It sounds like if we get a building, we get a park. Um, we don't have to wait till everything's built.
Great. Any response, Andrew? Other than just nod of the head?
No. There, not of that, yes, correct.
There, not of that. Yes, correct. Thank you. Yes, that that is a really important piece. Uh we certainly don't wanna. You know, the parks are equally important as the buildings, right? We don't want one to precede the other. Um, I should also say that even though there are two parks, because we physically are bifurcating that with the new Deco Street extension to the south, um we've always designed, I just say Robin, he's always designed this park as one vision, right? And so if that park were, if that street weren't to exist, this would be one contiguous park. And when you look back at that Hundred Acres Master Plan slide that Rob showed, that is the start of that entire park, uh that line of park, um parks down to the um Comet Center eventually. And so again, um we see this one, but through legal reasons, we have obviously boundaries since Deco Street will become a public street.
Good, thank you.
Interesting. Thank you. Commissioner Herbst.
Yeah, just a a quick question that on looking at the diagram that shows the where you're filling and to what degree on the right in front of fifteen Neco, it has a extending line of protection. Is that the city berm? Or is that something else?
No, they've they, if you go out there today, you can see um there's a set of stairs that are at the very southern edge of their project. And the top of those stairs is conveniently uh or intentionally twenty point five, which is designed flood elevation. And then they have also extended their that elevation through a series of walls and other landscape treatments to the northern end of their property. And so we are literally meeting that top of stairs not going away, that pavement will stay uh and be incorporated into our project at the same elevation. So the top of the amphitheater will match that elevation, which is twenty point five.
Okay, so sorry for my, I'm sorry for me to grasp all this. So will there be a berm just e- eventually in front of that? Or is that
No.
handled? What needs to be done there? Okay.
No, that's all that needs to be done. The word, the word berm is a little bit like um Kleenex in some ways, right? It's it's a, it's a, it's a raising of finish grade. We think we're doing it better than the buried elephant, which is what one thinks of as a berm. We're essentially terracing up to the twenty point five, six feet-ish grade change, making seats that look out over the Fort Point Channel. From that higher elevation, we are sloping in a very gradual slope all the way back to A Street. And so the berm becomes really this big doorstop in section, if you will, right? It's like got a long graceful edge to it. So the whole park could be considered, both of those parks could be considered a berm.
Gotcha.
At a macro scale.
Well, I look forward to sitting on those steps. Um, and the line, the line of protection offsite by others on the other side?
That will be the berm.
Oh, okay.
There are some very complex issues around access, Gillette's access to the pump house. They need to that kind of square building on the Fort Point. They need to maintain vehicular access there. And so we are building into the right of way and then providing a point of access for Gillette uh to maintain uh vehicular access to the pump house and this and providing the city with essentially a retaining wall at that edge that they can tie their berm into. And the berm now becomes loosely in which it becomes some sort of deployable tide gate that the city or state or others will design.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No more questions.
Great, thank you.
I did want to add a couple, sorry, points of uh clarifications to what was just discussed. So I think another way of seeing that line of protection is just a graphic line. There's no actual physical wall or structure protruding out of the ground, right? It is the literal ridge line, you know, in that, in the you're you're on a hike somewhere and you've got the the contour lines and that is the highest point meeting that design flood elevation. And Rob pointed out that twenty point five is indeed the true uh design flood elevation as determined through FEMA. Uh but we actually are going higher. We're at twenty one point five. So that is the one for their free board. So our buildings are actually set at the twenty one point five. That matches that top contour line, which ties into the uh existing contours to the north at Deco Street and then would continue to the south. So it's twenty one point five directly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um Eleanor, I don't see any hands up. Uh have you gotten uh any emails?
Uh, no emails, and I see no hands raised either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to Tom Ready has raised his hand. Okay, Tom.
Hi, Tom Ready. Um, I live in twenty one Wormwood Street, adjacent to the project. Uh, the, I guess I'd say this, this project has been, um I appreciate the efforts that related deal and their team have put forward to bring this project to where it is. I think it's safe to say the neighborhood looks forward to um to this project getting started. I I will just say one thing, and that would be the pri- I I in listening to some of the commissioner comments, uh the priority of phasing, right? Um, clearly, we're interested in whichever phase goes first that some type of flood protection gets built. Um, we've seen flood waters come into the neighborhood um uh down Benford Street and up through um the uh sewer system because there's some deficiencies and floodgates have since been fixed. But and we recognize that uh we're in a precarious position here. So as as the phasing occurs, uh hopefully as buildout takes place, um focus is on the buildout of the berm first and foremost, followed by other benefits such as parks, right? That would be my other comments. And uh I'd like to thank uh the related team and the team on call for all of their work that they've done, as they've kind of worked with the city, worked with the state and uh with the community to get this to where it is. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, it almost sounds like there's a race to build the berm here. Um, but uh Andrew, I don't know if you uh wanted to um respond.
Yeah, so um hi, Tom, good to hear you. Um, and just want to say thank you for your support and all the community member support over the past five years. Um, this project would not be um where it is without the public input and sounds trite, but it is really true. Um, I think we've done a good job listening. We think we've done a good job listening and trying to incorporate many um design elements to meet a lot of the concerns. Um, the phasing is obviously a big concern for everybody. Um, I think the best case condition is the whole project goes at once, right? And the berm gets built with the G four, G five west parcel. The next condition would be if the east west parcel, G four, G five and berm are built first. So that's the highest level. And so therefore, conceptually, the production is in. Um, the second condition would be if the east parcel, the G six building closest to A Street is built first. The remaining portion, the west on the Harbor Walk, would remain at the existing fifteen five. So the concern there, of course, is that's not at a wavelength elevation. Um, part of the licensing and structure is that whichever development goes first, west or east, the Neco Street, the street itself would be built along with either west or east. And so if the condition were the G six east parcel is built first, Neco Street must be built with it. And that building of Neco Street will raise um that level up. Uh, I might get this wrong, about three, maybe four feet at that point.
Yeah.
Uh, I think around nineteen or so, right?
Oh, yeah.
So let's call it about four feet. Um, and so while that's not the full twenty one point five, that is um certainly a step in the right direction towards protecting that that piece that you've kind of create this bowl, if you will, this this other barrier right there along with Deco Street. And of course, the intent that would be to try to advance the west um as quickly as possible. Um, so I think that's the the best kind of scenario and kind of the kind of the most you know, the the scenario that maybe people have concerns with. But uh the intent again is to build everything at the same time.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Um, any emails, Eleanor?
Uh, no emails either, and I don't see any other raised hands.
Great, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to uh close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with the special condition that uh should the M O U for the berm um with the city or the berm M O U with the city uh be available before construction, uh it would be shared with staff. Or shared with staff whenever it's actually, let me take that back. Um, whenever it's uh agreement is reached on the berm M O U with the city that it is um provided to staff for our files. Could someone please like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Laney?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
On next item on the agenda, notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty forty four, Boston file number twenty twenty five uh dash zero one six from Niche Engineering on behalf of Brandywine Village Company Limited Partnership for the proposed construction of a new trash and recycling area, including the installation of asphalt pavement, concrete pads and uh bollards uh and an underground conduit um in handhole uh and a stormwater management system at eight seventy Saratoga Street in East Boston. Uh, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
So good evening. My name is Chris Adi again with Niche Engineering. Uh, I'm here with Diane Bernath, who is the proponent. I don't know if you, Diane, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, uh, I'm Diane Bernath, the uh owner's rep for Brandywine Village.
Thanks.
Great. Pleasure.
Thank you. Uh, so if you can go to the next slide, please. Which I think is another title slide, so you can skip over that one too. Um, and the next slide. Alright, so proposed activities on the site. Um, the so the work that we're going to describe, essentially, the the proponent's working has been working with I S D to consolidate uh trash operations into a single um corner of the site, which is the corner of the site that we're talking about tonight. Um, and that would be trash operations for the entire forty five building development, which is on the site. Um, so the the site itself is about twenty acres and it would all be um trash would all be served from this one section of the site. So um to to basically do that sort of trash management, um that's going to require the installation of new concrete pads and bollards for a trash compactor and a recycling dumpster. Um, it's also, we are proposing the installation of some about eighty five hundred square feet of asphalt, which is going to be for the vehicles that are going to be serving those dumpsters and the trash compactor um as well as asphalt walkway to connect this to some of the units that are closer, just for pedestrian access to it as well. Um, there'll be a new stormwater management system which will handle the runoff from the new paved areas, um which is designed to meet the Boston Water Standards for treatment and for storage, the one inch uh volume. And because the trash compactor is going to need power, there's also a six hundred and sixty linear foot um conduit, which is in the handhole, which is going to provide power to that. So we go to the next slide, please. So the existing project site, like I mentioned, it's a very large site, which you can see on the left. Um, and on the very far left corner of that, there's a little orange area, and that is the actual project site that we're talking about. It's a really small portion of the larger parcel. Um, so on the right, zooming in on that, um you can see it's an existing sort of um not paved, but you know, not not in the best condition area. And this will essentially improve that and add the um the trash management. If you go to the next slide. So these are just some photos to give you an idea of what the existing condition looks like. North side facing south, that's kind of looking um towards Route one A there. Um, and the southwest side facing east is just looking out um kind of towards the like the Constitution Beach area. Uh next slide. Uh, just a couple more views, giving you a better idea of the site. Uh, next slide. So the site is located inland, subject to coastal storm flowage, uh right in the middle of it. You can see the the storm, the water is uh coming from the Chelsea Creek on the northwest side of the uh site. Next slide. So this is the proposed site plan. Um, you can see the two trash compactors in the dark, or the one trash compactor in the recycling pad, uh which is the darker gray. The orange is the area required for the trucks to serve them. Uh, so that's based on the turning movements that we did. Uh, and then the lighter gray is the new areas of asphalt, which includes the access for uh residents to come drop off their trash in these areas, uh as well as the access for the trash compactors themselves. And there won't, there's no parking that's proposed here. You can see the 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 areas where there is asphalt is, you know, strictly just so that the trash compactors can um serve those areas. So there's no proposed parking. That's just going to be straight. And then you can see the walkway coming in from the bottom right-hand corner uh to provide pedestrian access as well. Uh, next slide, please. So below grade, we've got in highlighted in green here, this is the underground pipe and stone system, which will provide the um one inch volume stormwater storage for the site. Uh, and that'll capture all the uh new proposed impervious areas. Um, there is an existing B W S C store, uh sorry, sanitary sewer, which runs uh diagonally across the site, which is in yellow. Uh, there's a buried manhole which is called out here. It's it's essentially just below where that red line crosses it. Um, and that is going to be brought to grade uh as part of this project as well. Um, and then you can see the red line, which is the proposed conduit path of the conduit, which is going down to the right. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see it's six hundred and sixty linear feet. It has to go a good ways uh to get access to that power. So it's a just a single trench for that. And whatever materials are dug up as part of that trench will be replaced in kind. There's no change otherwise uh proposed there. Next slide. Uh, this is just a slide showing the changes in areas. Um, so you can see that it is an increase in impervious area. Um, but we are mitigating that with the installation of that uh stormwater system. And next slide, I think that's it. We have a full set of plans, but um at this point, I'll open up the questions uh from the commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I don't have anything uh before I turn it over. Just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to mute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@bosn.gov. Uh Eleanor, what do you have on this?
I didn't have anything on this either. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Chris, is there any type of containment around the trash compactor such that if some nefarious person were to put oil paint or whatever in the compactor and it squeezes out, but it doesn't get to the drainage system?
I don't. I'm not aware of anything that's built into it, or and we're not proposing anything that's around it to capture, to capture that.
Okay, you haven't had a sign off from the commission yet on the stormwater, have you?
I don't believe so. I think we, I think we resubmitted the plans to you, but we haven't had a sign off yet.
Okay, expect that question. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Um, I I thought I did read that there was like Cape Cod berm around it, but maybe I'm mistaken. I'll let you speak to that, Chris. Um, I was just curious if there's um an opportunity to, you know, add any canopy trees, given that there's this fairly significant um addition of of paving, you know, just to sort of help offset some of the from heat island effect of that. Um, I know there's the sewer um easement through there, so avoiding that, of course. But you know, there might be a few pockets where um you could add a few trees.
Yeah, so um, so there is a concrete, or there's, sorry, there is a Cape Cod berm, which is around the edge of this basically between the either the sidewalk and the paved area or the grass area in the paved area. But we do have some storm drainage in there, sort of like to John's point. If something were to get out, I guess there would be a potential. So we we can work with with uh Mr. Sullivan on that. Um, and then with regards to trees, Diane, I I would ask, you could weigh in on this. I'll I'll just note that uh there is that um sewer running across the site as well as our new stormwater system. Uh, but there's also a gas line which is running through the site, which is also limiting some of the areas where we can plant here.
Yeah, I mean, I think the owners would be um open to installing if if we can. Um, but there is a lot of underground and I did talk to um Ryan when we met with the conservation people on Monday. Um, and we looked at an area, but the the gas line is right there. Um, but but we would be open to that if um if that's something that's going to be in the order of conditions.
Good. We we can put in something that you'll explore and consult with staff. Does that work for you, Commissioner Laney?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
No, no further questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, Eleanor, any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands, and uh we also don't have anything in the inbox.
Okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with a special condition that the applicant will uh explore the possibility of uh planting um trees. I'll leave it open. Um, uh, in consultation with staff.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, two, zero, forty-five in Boston file number twenty, twenty-five dash zero, one, seven from Child's Engineering on behalf of the Boston Planning and Development Agency for proposed restoration efforts, including the installation of new riprap, repairs to the granite seawall and removal and replacement of broken fender piles, among other minor maintenance, such as concrete restoration and ladder and handrail replacements at ten Terminal Street in South Boston. Uh, resource areas land under ocean land, subject to coastal storm flowage and twenty-five-foot waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, I am Matt Sol with Child's Engineer.
Great. It's all yours.
All right. Uh, so I'm just here representing the Boston Planning Department. The location of the site is ten Terminal Street. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, this is, this just shows the location. It's in the reserve channel, uh right adjacent to Summer Street. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, here are some photos uh representing the conditions there and some of the more significant repairs that we're doing. Uh, first photo on the top left shows the condition of the sheet pile over on the western end of the facility. The pile cap has mostly disintegrated away. Um, the top of the sheet pile is just above the mean high waterline, and uh some of the waves are starting to come over and cause some washout of the uh fill behind there. And the uh second photo to the right, this is not actually the property, but this whole uh section uh east of the uh bridge there is all the same construction of of pier. Um, this is one of the adjacent properties where the uh washout of materials and disintegration of the concrete resulting in the water coming over, resulting from the water coming over has caused the original timber piles to be exposed. Um, so the goal of a lot of our repairs is to mitigate that, or some of the more significant repairs is to mitigate that. Um, the third photo there, you just see a wild fender pile. There's about twenty-nine of them on site, I believe. And then in the fourth pile, you see the seawall over on the uh western end of the facility. Uh, the pointing and mortar has all washed away. Um, we're proposing to just re-point that wall. Uh, it's all being done by hand. We're chipping out the existing grout and re-pointing it. Um, in addition to that, we're also just doing some minor maintenance, including replacing hand rail, handrails, um replacing some cleats, sealing the deck and repainting. Um, and a couple of other minor minor things will be shown later. You can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, this is just a visual of the uh whole site. You can go ahead to the next slide. Here's just the plan showing some of the repairs. Um, most of them are being done on the deck or to the fender system um in floats. Uh, the area of those uh where this uh bulkhead is is over to the western, the left side of the page, where you see the uh uh pile caps in there, uh around station, between station one hundred and one fifty. And then the uh seawall is uh all the way on the left side, uh past that, over by the buildings over there. You can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, this first repair is what we're doing behind the sheet pile there, so we're not doing any dredging. We're just filling that area in to protect the uh protect the existing fill and prevent further washout. It's just going to be a riprap armor going right up that slope. Um, the detail below that just shows the re-pointing of the seawall. Again, that's just going to be done by chipping it out by hand at low tide and uh filling it in. You can go ahead to the next slide. Uh, this just shows a zoomed-in image of some of the uh fender elements, um some of the defects on it. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. That'll show better. Um, here's a, just an elevation view of that. Uh, we're proposing, if it's behind the barges, the fender piles are no longer necessary because they have these guide piles there, so we're just going to be pulling out the fender piles and leaving it as is. Um, where they are damaged, where the fender piles are okay, we'll be leaving them in place. Um, some of the other fending, fender elements, like the chocks and rails uh will be replaced if they are necessary because some of these guide piles attach into them. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. Um, we're also doing some uh cleaning and recoating of the guide piles and bollards. This is all going to be done by hand. There's no sandblasting involved. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. That's it.
Hey, great. Thank you, Matt. Um. DMF, uh, I think they submitted a letter. Yes, they did. Okay, and they had no issues because you're operating the same footprint, right?
Or no, Chair Parker, um, I think that for this one, they had recommended their standard set of vibratory et cetera.
Yep, okay, merging NOIs here. Okay, so Matt, uh, we would be inserting DMF's recommendations into the uh order conditions. So you're worried. Okay, good. Um, Eleanor, what do you have?
Uh, I do not have anything beyond the um DMF conditions, so that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boson.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, Matt, you mentioned there'll be some uh filling with riprap um to avoid further washup. How big are those stones? And are those hand-carried in there? Or how are you getting them in there?
Yeah, so getting them in there is going to be a little bit tricky. Um, we're not a hundred sure on what the contractor is going to prefer to do. We don't have a contractor set yet. Um, the largest size that they get up to is twelve to twenty-four inch, so it's mostly going to be done by hand. Um, they're probably going to need to pass it down either by a chute. Uh, I don't think they'll be able to get a barge in there because of the bridge's location, so it's all going to have to be done from up on the pier. They're going to pass it down either by a chute or a big claw. Um, and just, it's going to be a lot of manual labor.
But you have a minimum size. It's not like they can put whatever they like, like pebbles.
We do. It grades up. I I believe it starts with six-inch stone at the bottom, and then they're working up to uh twelve-inch diameter at least.
Alright, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, none here either. Thank you.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Eleanor, any uh hands raised?
I do not see any raised hands and uh nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions, uh including as special conditions, the uh DMF's recommendation in their letter dated June twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a sec. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi, thank God we got Steve to make motions.
I know, because you're not going to do it till January after the first.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Since, yeah, got it. Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, request for a determination of applicability from VHB Inc. on behalf of Vertex Pharmaceuticals for the proposed right-of-way improvements, including the replacement of sidewalk and curb cuts, the installation of two streetlights, and fencing and planting of twelve street trees at one Harbor Street in South Boston. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, John Heschin with VHB uh on behalf of Vertex. Um, Mike Ragusa from Vertex is also uh online here, if there's any questions that come up for for the owner. Um, we're here before you tonight with this request. Um, we were here almost exactly a year ago for some interim improvements along Harbor Street uh adjacent to Vertex's property at One Harbor. Um, those interim improvements included a minor widening of Harbor Street. Um, replacement of what was a flush uh curb and sidewalk with a raised, six-inch raised curb and sidewalk, so installation of that curb. And we did the installation of a temporary bituminous sidewalk. Um, the reason for that interim condition was uh EDIC was looking to repave Harbor Street um in the fall of twenty, twenty-four, which they did. We got our improvements done um in order for that repaving of Harbor Street to take place. So we're we're really back tonight. Um, to remove the temporary bituminous sidewalk and replace it with a, so that was an eight-foot uh bituminous sidewalk, replace it with a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk and a three-foot wide uh landscape planter strip, um twelve street trees along Harbor Street. And we are actually replacing six existing um trees on the Northern Ave property line with five new trees. Um, we consulted with Eleanor before we made this application, hoping that actually we could have accomplished this through an amended order of conditions. Um, and Eleanor could also then consulted with DEP. And due to the removal of the trees on Northern Ave, um uh DEP advised her that uh that that could be approved through an RDA. Um, so that's the path we've chosen here. All the other work to the sidewalk, replacing the sidewalk and installing the planter strip is within the previously approved, last year is previously previously approved limit of work. Um. Why don't you go to the next slide, please? Um, and I'll just rush through these. It's it's getting late in the evening. This is basically the the project locus, the sidewalk along Harbor Street, and I'd say the back of sidewalk along Northern Ave, very short section there. Next slide. Um, you know, we're we're in the land subject to coastal storm flowage, as you can see here, and next slide, and we are also within a designated port area. Those are the two resource areas the project is within. Next slide. Um, so this is a fairly uh recent aerial photograph that shows um some of the actually, two years ago, we were before the commission for the, what I'll call the utility yard improvements, which are right in the middle of the photo there, and new generator on, I mean, a new bulk gas storage area on the left. Um, a new generator and a new raised uh electric equipment platform. So what's in color, the the yellow is the what would be concrete sidewalk, retake, replacing the uh temporary bituminous. The landscape strip in green and the trees, twelve trees along Harbor Street. Um, and then five trees along that short section of Northern Ave to replace the existing pine trees, which are not really thriving very well. Um, and they're they they don't really um work well with the street trees that were planted as part of the Northern Ave improvements that were completed fairly recently. Um, and I should also mention, at the back of the landscape strip, there will be an ornamental uh picket fence, metal picket fence installed um to basically prevent or provide some screening of the loading areas and the utility yard areas. And that fence is limited to the locations, and you can't really see it on this exhibit, but where the green landscape areas are, there will be fence, and there will be fence at the back of the landscape area along Northern Ave. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just a a graphic of what, um, this is the Northern Ave Harbor Street corner. Um, so the new street trees, planter area that will have ground cover perennials, um grasses and perennials, the uh ornamental picket fence, uh it'll be a black. Um, I'll call it, it's black metal, I'll call it like a faux wrought iron, but with that diagonal design incorporated into it. Um, and I think really that's the summary of what's proposed. Uh, we are hoping that um the commission is able to uh approve this, uh issue a negative um determination, I guess, with conditions. Uh, the order of conditions for the interim phase work is still open. Um, and I guess I'll leave it up, leave it at that for the, any questions from the board?
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Okay, uh, just want to remind members of the public, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot uh use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star six, star nine, and then star six to unmute yourself. Uh, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boson.gov. Um, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Uh, we didn't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm going to go out of order. I'm going to go to uh, since we uh raised a procedural question, I'll go to our um uh procedural guru, Commissioner Herbst. First. No pressure, no pressure.
Well, I I was only confused about, it sounds like some things are covered under the NOI and some things under the RDA. I don't have an issue with any of the work. I don't know if Eleanor can tell us whether s- some of the things described are already aren't aren't actually going to be covered under the RDA.
Sorry, so, um.
Should be about ten minutes.
Do you uh, do you mean, like, what is covered under the existing order of conditions and what will be covered under this, or?
That, that's what I meant. I mean, I is that the, is that what you were referring to, Chair Parker?
So the, there's the existing order of conditions, and um this is all part of the same project, but because DEP has um been more stringent, I think, about just making sure that there's not an addition in square foot of impacts. Um, largely because of the addition of the trees, DEP's guidance was that uh this needs to be some sort of separate filing, not an amendment. Um, and so we had recommended an RDA due to the scope of the work, but it would be done as part of the larger project.
I I see no issue with that. I just wasn't clear whether maybe some of the things were actually going to be done under the NOI, but if this is all done under the RDA, I don't have a concern about that.
Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan? And I noticed she gave us a ten-minute warning there when you walked away, so move this along.
Well, there's two dogs that want to be walked, so your choice. Um, I have no questions on this one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linay?
Uh, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson? I'll skip ahead. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst? Uh, anything else? No, okay. Commissioner Wilson? I raised my voice like that would make a difference. What's wrong with me? Um, okay, he might have dropped off. Okay, Eleanor, any raised hands or?
I do not see any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control uh conditions?
So moved.
And enclose the hearing.
Apologies, Chair Parker. I realize I said I didn't have anything. Um, in addition to the standard erosion control conditions, would you want a condition requiring tree replacement for any trees that don't survive the first two growing seasons?
That sounds like a very good idea.
Great.
Anybody have any objection to that friendly amendment? Okay.
Thank you.
So the revised motion is on the floor.
I'll move it again.
Thank you. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiazi?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
You're everyone, and uh congratulations, Eleanor.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, uh, last item for the uh hearing here is a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero, zero, six, uh, two, zero, zero, nine, and Boston file number two, twenty, twenty, twenty-four dash zero, three, one. Um, from AECOM on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the removal and reconstruction of the existing sidewalk to ensure ADA compliance at William. of the existing sidewalk to ensure ADA compliance at William Jade Day Boulevard in South Boston, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, twenty-five foot waterfront area and one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Do we have a presentation on this, or Eleanor, are you going to handle this? We must have someone here. Okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Tom Field from AECom. I'm here tonight on behalf of DCR. Tom Walton was unable to make it tonight, so I'm flying solo this evening. As you had stated, this is part of the William Jade Day Boulevard sidewalk replacement effort that DCR is conducting, highlighting areas all along the Boulevard that just have infrastructure that needs to be replaced under a current contract, and they're trying to do as much as they can with the funding that's available. Next slide, please. All right, so as you had mentioned, it's the sites within land subject to coastal storm flowage. We also have the twenty-five foot waterfront area across the street and the buffer zone comes right out to the sidewalk. It's directly across the street from the beach. The commission may remember this site. This is the third time we've been here. Over the past year or so, we had the electric lines in Evans Field and the water line all the way down to Sullivan's, just to the northeast of the rank itself. Next slide, please. And here's the project area in outlined in yellow. Their sidewalk is going to be reconstructed the same method as the commission had previously approved. A small excavator will be removing the chunks of concrete that will be live loaded and transported off-site. The area will then be graded and the concrete will be poured. And they're looking to just remove the existing asphalt and repave that parking lot as well. I believe on the next slide, you can see some figures. Well, here's some photos of the sidewalk itself. These ones are from Google Street View. It's good, the sidewalk is cracked in these areas. Pavement's all, you know, broken up, and it's going to be replaced in kind here. Next slide, please. And here you can see this is where the Zamboni comes out of the ice rink, and you can see that parking lot is a bit mangled. A lot of that comes from the aforementioned electric line and water line work that they did. They were dodging utilities in this parking lot, some of the existing infrastructure while trying to connect those lines, and the parking lot is just in rough shape. To the left of this photo, I wish I had a better one, but I didn't get a, get one sent to me. The parking lot's in even worse shape. That would be it. If we go to the next slide, you can see the plan. This is just the plan calling out the areas of the sidewalks with the ADA ramp. And as I said, it's basically an infrastructure maintenance project is really just to replace a crumbling public infrastructure. And you know, bring it, bring it back up to a, excuse me, unacceptable state while they have the opportunity to do so. The erosion controls will be established similar to the the other section of sidewalk that the commission has already improved. Silt sacks will go in any catch basins that are in the area just as they will or as they are for the other portion of the sidewalk that the commission has already approved. And that is it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff at cc@Boston.gov. I don't have any questions since Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I wanted to flag since this is another kind of interesting procedural question. The reason that we were thinking that an amendment makes sense is because despite the fact that this isn't in the same exact area as the original order of conditions, the type of work being proposed is the same and the sort of scope of the project is the same as what's being covered by the by the original order of conditions, and there isn't going to be any additional permanent impacts to the resource area. So just to sort of explain our thoughts on it as well.
Yeah, and that's the way I was looking at it too. I mean, I looked at the regulations this afternoon, and it's no significant change to the scope. All the other criteria for issuing an amendment are fine. I think there were four, so three of them were fine. The one I looked at a little bit was the scope, but the interpretation I got was it was, sometimes doesn't significantly change the scope, and I don't see how this does, but I'd like to go to Commissioner Herbst first to get her thoughts on this.
I think your analysis makes sense, but I don't, I don't see any reason to hold it up.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
None here either. Thank you.
Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
No questions.
Yeah, we heard from Commissioner Herbst. Did we get any hands? I don't see any hands raised. Did you get any emails?
No hands, no emails.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to amend the order of conditions to get a little bit more detail for this. If I can find my page. Okay, amend the order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six, two zero zero nine, and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero three one to include the work that was presented at the hearing this evening.
I want to close the hearing as well.
And close the hearing. Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner SS, yes, Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, there were two continuances this evening, continued our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six, one nine nine six, and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero two one, and DEP file number zero zero six, twenty forty-two, and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero one four. We'll now begin our regular meeting. So we have three, and I think I'm down to like three minutes according to Commissioner Sullivan. So we have three requests for certificate of compliances. Eleanor, I'll ask you first, are they all ready in your estimation to be issued?
We believe they're all ready, and we have listed the specific maintenance conditions that we'd recommend, including in our staff comments.
Oh. Okay, then I will need to read them off individually, right? Hold on one second. Let me find them. I thought I was going to be tricky and do this en masse, but.
To be fair, the conditions do specify perpetual maintenance conditions that don't expire upon issuance of the COC.
That's it? Just that?
Well, those are, I mean, they're, all of them are identified with that language, so.
Same language. Okay. Okay. Any questions on any of the three COCs from any commissioners? Sounds like no. So I would entertain a motion to issue certificate of compliances for DEP file number zero zero six, one three six one, DEP file number zero zero six, one three six four, DEP file number zero zero six, twenty eighteen, and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero three eight with perpetual, perpetual maintenance conditions.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner SS Smargiazi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, Eleanor, any administrative updates?
Yes, just very quickly, Vivian Delapaz, who has been our conservation fellow for the last six months, is wrapping up her time with the city on Friday, so she is on to new exciting adventures, and this is her last hearing. But she, I think, has a great summer planned, so we're really thankful for all of the work that she's done while she's been on staff with us.
Fantastic. Thank you, Vivian. Good luck. Hope we meet up again sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no meeting minutes. Everybody was like in Finland or something. I don't know what happened. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting by acclamation. Any objections?
No.
We are adjourned, and thank you for your participation.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks. Good night.